701.
Thank you.
Welcome to the August 8 meeting of the Open Town Council on 27th. Welcome members of the public and to the council. Thank you very much for coming. Gen rights on one is apologies, we've seen apologies. No apologies, they are present, thank you very much. Declaration to be addressed, gen writing two. Members are asked to be prepared for any disclosure of opportunity of interest in that having respect to items on the agenda. So.
Number fourteen.
Fourteen.
It's about the parking of a queue in the town hall. I don't understand.
Okay. So you're reclaiming the queue interest.
Well.
Is that you're reclaiming interest in respect of the people, okay? Any other information or interest? So just send the end of the minutes. Gen writing three then. Confirm the minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday 12th of July. First of all. councillor Brooks. Excuse me.
It was held on the 12th of July, minute four five two, 917.
Four five. Four five two.
One seven. Yes, I didn't propose the motion and I voted against it, whereas minuted that I proposed it. And the recording of the votes are incorrect.
Did you say that at all then? So you say you did not have.
No, I do remember I actually stood up to object because I didn't feel there was a need to exempt the item.
Okay. You recall who did, I don't.
You did, I'll shabooia it.
Did I, I did, yes, okay.
I tell you, it's wrong, I mean seconded it, but the votes were unanimous. Sorry, everybody except me, I voted against it.
So your standard should be that I proposed.
So seven votes for more extension.
Not the same vote as the ten.
This should be a game.
That should be a game.
Okay, yeah, thanks for asking that.
Wait, that's around the time of the game, actually, for powers of access.
Have we had the other second floor? Please, the second floor, all those in favour, with the man one. The games, abstaining, one.
Two.
Two abstentions. Two abstentions.
Sunny Ann, Paul, you should be. Yes, yes.
Three.
Who's the first? Sunny Ann.
I thought you said you were.
No, I said Paul, sorry, something didn't, sorry, sorry.
Oh, good. Next, and then to confirm the minutes of the extraordinary meeting held on Friday 23rd of June.
No comments.
No comments.
No.
They proposed by Joyce, second by David, all those in favour? No, you can't, oh no. All those in favour? The games, no. Yeah, and right now. I understand. Last one, confirm the minutes of extraordinary meeting on Wednesday 19th of June. Councillor Brooks.
Yes, it refers to the exempt, um, four five day. It says that I took away the report and I made that struck for the minutes because all I kept was the recommendations, which I received from you following day described as sanctions on the email. So I think it's incorrect to say I took the report away.
I think you like.
Thank you, just. Just doesn't sit easy with it, I don't understand why on the second page, on to the fourth paragraph down, we've had to minutet during submission, it was actually the chairman to request councillor Brooks' treatation to stop control to the council.
So where will we keep on?
On the.
On the red paper. Which paragraph?
One, two, three, four, on the second.
Four on the second, yeah.
Excuse me.
No, I just, I just don't, I don't understand why that, that bit is in there.
Is it safe sense?
Can we, can we just have?
I'm going to raise a point of all, we're going to discuss the contents, I'm not against the council to discuss it, but we have to go into.
I'm just, I'm, no, I'm just.
So my proposal would be exempt this part of the meeting so that the minutes can be discussed properly.
What, I, do you want to make specific reference to something?
No, all I'm saying is I don't understand why the end of that paragraph is in there.
Do you still back all that? Because councillor Brooks has made a vote, yes, I think, however, however, I just finished. Do you wish to specifically refer to the reports?
No, it was, it was, it was just pure, I don't think that was necessary. This is not a minute, it's not, it's not necessarily.
Okay. Any other comments? Remember, if you want to discuss the details of it, we need to make it present.
No, I think it should be present, sorry.
Do you wish to discuss?
Well, I made a proposal for that on the table, that we exempt the meeting for this discussion of this minute.
Okay, then we'll defer this, we could be, the consultant part wrote the minutes, so we'll defer this until the next meeting to talk to him, and then we'll make an exempt type.
That proposal to do that.
Yes, yeah.
My second.
I'm not happy with these.
And we, all of us, we'll vote on that to defer the next meeting.
So now, you've prepared, it was my.
My proposal, my second there, you remember, it's a little form of presentation.
It's not. So we'll move on then. Anything else on the, on the minutes other than the exempts?
Your question, if you're a red paper back, please say it.
The, uh, the standing orders do not require, they're currently handed that, but they do require that it is not published or shared with anybody else. It would be prudent, it would be prudent to handle them, in that way they can't mistake them, you're accidentally shared with anybody else, they've got problems like that. So my recommendation is that people put them in to save the risk of that, it's more of losing.
Is that a comment?
They weren't such a.
No, we have no cross talking, please, councillor.
They always survive meetings. We should. Yeah. I know what I'm doing.
Uh, yes. Right, again, so.
Since I wanted to say something important, I was shutted down by councillor Brooks. If I had known again, why would you discuss this and we get it back again?
Yes. Well, just to repeat it, standing orders do not require that, they do require they are not disclosed to others. By handing it in, that can't be done accidentally. Okay, my gen writing four, chairmen and members of the reports, a number of these have been tabled, you have your mine and class and one gone. Adam, do we have any other reports? Sunny Ann, have you, if you want to read it, read it.
I'll just give you access.
Okay.
Okay. I was looking forward to represent Oakentown Council at the Oakentown partnership meeting. After interviewing me, they decided against my appointment, but I have asked to share a few points from their meeting on 22nd of May. It was noted that the £6,000 given by Oakentown Council plus what they hold in their bank account would only allow Oakentown partnership to keep going until January 2018. It was reported that RCC were unlikely to make any grants towards the town centre manager, so going forward, any events should be unmaintained. Until the town centre manager becomes self-financed, they would still be looking at support from Oakentown Council. It was also suggested that Oakentown partnership take care of promotions at Oakham if Oakentown Council were unable to do it. That's all I want to say with it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Five, the five councils' questions, we have a question, a question.
Chairman, I did submit a question.
I want to see the council books.
Well, I send my emails and you get them, you're not removed from my list of sending them.
I haven't had an email from you.
But that's the chairman, I did as well, every other member of the council. So this is why the sanctions, as you say, they're not affecting council business.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to debate the point now, councillor Brooks.
But I'd like you to.
Excuse me, please, no, excuse me, I'm speaking, council resolved that for administrative reasons, that anything you wanted to send to the club would come via the chair.
And the.
I. It to the chair. Okay, I'm not, I'm not, I haven't had anything from you, so there's no question. Well, move on to a class of course.
I'm sorry, but that's not, I want to ask a question. Because we're getting minute.
Gen writing seven, do we have any other questions? Councillor Brooks, please, please say it.
But I like it minute that my question has been refused.
Councillor Brooks, I have not had a question.
Well, if you like, I will open the email and show that it went to you. I have an email here.
Councillor Brooks, please, please say it. I'm not going to get into a debate with this, I have not had an email from you, we're now on to a gen writing seven. Deputations for the public, I do believe.
Sorry, Chair, I think that we're not discussing the grants, is it the case?
Let's see, let's see.
Yeah, we're not allowed to comment on it.
No.
You can, but we have been allowed to comment in the past and there are a couple of serious matters on it. Like no authority is even for this payment.
The report is received.
No, when, sorry, sorry, when, when you get, this is what we have, no, we need to talk about this because this is why the council's not working. There's, we do have a piece of paper here that we can't comment on, that a cheque has been raised for £8,000. That should come to council as a payment for £5,000 for approval before it's, before it's paid. That's what I'm asking.
The gen writing seven, deputations by the public, yes, thank you very much.
This council is becoming a.
Please say it. Oh, please, if you have a better floor, please carry on.
And you can't even comment on what you want to comment, but it's like.
Councillor Brooks, excuse me for a moment, councillor Brooks, if you, I don't want to have to suspend the meeting and have you remove the meeting. But you, if you're going to continue to interrupt all the time, you'll leave you with no choice whatsoever, I don't want to do that. But if you carry on, I have to, because you are disrupting the meeting, you're not complying with standing orders.
No, nor are you, because you wouldn't allow me to have my.
Okay, you know, you know.
I answer.
Please, okay, yeah.
So, hello, I'm John Law from the Southland County Sheriff's Local Access Board.
Sorry, can I just say that I'm, yeah, I have a bit.
Sorry.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm patient, but my voice is.
That's all right, no problem. No question.
Apologies. And we're very interested in Cuts and Crows Park. We, as a Southland County Sheriff's Local Access Board, we have a group, a subgroup, that promotes access to the countryside for the disabled. And we have a variety of projects going on. One of the projects we did last year was a disabled, sorry, to train people to leave dementia friendly schools. And that's actually happening now at the lodge trust. Now, we've got further funding, sorry, further funding to train the further seven people. What we'd like to do is train those seven people so that those dementia friendly schools can happen in Oakham, where we've got the biggest population anyway in Rutland. And it's far better that people actually walk to where they want to go rather than drive. And there's possibility, there's some identity requirement in it anyway. So we're looking at Chris Cross Park and we're looking also at the castle grounds. Now, Chris Cross Park is a lovely park, but in terms of accessibility for people in wheelchairs, going from the car park up towards the castle grounds, that is very limited because it is a very narrow path. What we'd like to see happen, and we only act as advisors because we, that's our status if you like. What we'd like to see happen is that width of the path increased to at least a meter, preferably with three passing places en route. Some seats for resting areas so people can actually enjoy the park rather than use it as a cut through. And also some central planting along the way. Doesn't have to be all on the route, it just possibly, I understand that. But maybe if you did go that way, if you did choose to go that way, maybe people who have learned difficulties or various groups would like to help in maintaining that for you. So what I've also had, where, I mean, last week I spoke to a lady from dementia dementia, who runs their courses for us, who've done numerous ones in dementia. And she's quite happy to come, should you wish her to, to have a side meeting and talk about Chris Cross Park and how it could be improved. But I understand money is an issue and you've already got something on the table. It would just be nice if we could make it all inclusive and this would benefit everybody, not just people that have dementia, but all people with health and well, health and wellbeing issues, improve that, mental health issues, improve that for everybody as well. We know from research that there's plenty of evidence stacking up that shows that everybody who's out in the countryside that helps their general wellbeing and health, the other way round, but that's my call, apologies for that. I'll take any questions.
Can I just ask what, did I hear you say lodge trust?
Yes, it's a lodge trust.
As Martin said.
That's right.
You know, they were my patients.
And they're doing that, wasn't it?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, gen writer may work in meetings, steering group, staff group, they've got the reports and then the gen of the plan. Finance working group, policy and procedures from local publicity. Update and answering plans, do we have any comments or questions?
We need to note for this reason also the intention of this expenditure so we can make more type of.
So the first three then are from the fourth one, we have the expenditure. Yes.
Yes. The neighbourhood plan steering group, I've said it before, six pages of it, we've had its very basic comments and not reports. The, the neighbourhood plan has issues, some councillors commented about things here. We also certainly have an input as a town council, we're not having an input of the town council.
Yeah, you've got, on this, this.
So, yeah, I am.
It's not, it's not three minutes, you've just slated a working group.
No, it's not slated a working group, it's to actually point out an issue. And so we, we, the issues are, we are not getting comprehensive reports from the neighbourhood plan, i.e. we soon be losing the local club or consultant club who is supposed to be getting a grant. It would be nice to have an update to know what the situation of that is. Who are the new people that have been appointed, what are they doing? And who authorised the £40 expenditure? Because this council didn't authorise the working group to have delegated powers to make decisions on how they spend council money. So that's point one, the neighbourhood plan. And finance working group, well, we're not making comments on that. But the promotions one, I'm a little bit concerned that they just want to buy some postcards. I don't, personally, I don't see that the postcards are a viable source of expenditure. It's not a big amount of money, but to just be giving away free postcards, it is not, to me, I don't think it's something we should be doing. But I would like to just go back as you obviously told with the neighbourhood plan and really take it on board, but it is our working group. And we don't get proper reports, this is not proper reports, it just doesn't tell us anything. And then also I'd like a question answered, who authorised the £40 expenditure that's on there? Because we, we lost our working groups to spend money, so it's all.
That's on September as a candidate, it hasn't been authorized.
But it's been spent, isn't it, the £40, it's for some training, heritage training, it's for.
It doesn't say where that money comes from, that money came from the person's own pockets.
Well, why is it on here?
No, no, it's going into the September meeting.
It's like it doesn't make sense, because that's normally, if it's not in the person's pocket, why, why, why is it listed on September? Why is it listed on here when normally this is for us to authorise expenditure?
You haven't been asked to authorise that, you'll be asked to authorise that in September.
But then if we had clearer explanations on the reports, then we wouldn't have friction. Because we are just running, sorry, I didn't comment on that.
Any other comments, anyone else? Before we move on to the.
Do you want to turn to the side on? Yes, co-promotion, yes. Just the promotion publicity working group, which I, I pointed out last month, my colour period is. It's my house, I get sorry, I don't have the colour on. And green there, you see some red because it's potentially overdue. Drawing your attention purely to the large yellow hot for time, building, because this was off the stuff by the promotion publicity working group. And we're looking at the council do, are aware and basically authorise the high speed expenditure for the final bank concert. So we are looking for that to be accepted by the council, basically. Okay, so that, for everyone, that being said, now, it's to bring your attention, what we made where last week, Mark.
Thank you.
And we probably didn't stress it.
That's all.
Yeah. If there's any comments, then probably you want to speak about, otherwise looking to pay for the money, for the funds.
Your proposal.
I've proposed the nine pound.
Just second after that? Wait, and second bit first, okay, all those in favour?
What, what's this from?
It says.
It says.
He's got a comment, he can say, what, half on that?
All right.
So we're voting, they're all those in favour of the nine pound.
You can vote on this.
We can vote on it. Bye, thank you. Again.
I can't see that, but I have to believe that because I thought it was listed like yours, so I only looked at the last page, it's the first one.
Are you voting for or?
I will vote for it, it's my first one.
How do you generally?
Can I make a comment? Ready, I'll make that.
Yes, you may.
Of course, promotion is just about having events. And of course, councillor Brooks's can make his own comments, but postcards are part of a promotion working group. They are given out to the visitors. So please, just be mindful that promotion is just not about events in the park, thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, moving on then to item number nine, cuts close, pathway, ten, C, we call on having to exempt.
Yeah, basically, happiness, this is part, maybe it's met. The first thing I'll say is happiness and development since this was presented to council, and I'll try and keep it as concise as I can. The first thing I will say is that all the beautiful documents you've been supplying this evening, the map, the spec, photographs, can I ask you all to hang on to those because I think this will probably be best deferred. The reason being, as been highlighted by Martin, is that this is considerably higher. When we had this quoted in September 2016, we had a quote that basically equated to about £25,000, that's what we budgeted. The reason it's now appears to be £35,000 just for one part of the path, and it is £22,000 for the other parts, we're looking at a £60,000 budget now, so it's more than doubled, is the spec that was suggested by Rochambeau County Council was that it had concrete path edges on it. And it's the concrete path edge being put a lot where there aren't any, that's pushed the price up dramatically. Person last year quoted didn't quote concrete, they're just going to put timber edging down there. When we put this out, I did put it out to three people, I approached five different organisations, which were recommended by Rochambeau County Council. Only two replied, one of which is the quote by the people that you see at 36 and 25, or 35, 25. And then one company replied back and said, no, I'm interested to tender because we're too busy. So my concern is, because I have got concerns, it has got unsubstantiated, the guy that did quote actually said, the biggest part is the path edges, can you see if you can get the spec reviews to move, will the local authority, county council, unitary authority, allow you to do it without concrete edgings? There's two parts to that, if they agree, then I would recommend that we go out to tender and approach the same organisations again. So that, if we go out to tender, means that the time's in the well. If, and also it might be that you can't just feel that you actually want to have concrete path edges, because it might actually give longevity to the work that's being done. Because if it is going to cost between £13,000 and £60,000 and it isn't edged, will it degrade over time? So there's a couple of things to think about, A, do, as a council, we want concrete edgings? Or do you want me to continue, I have sent an email through to RCC to say, can we do it without? If we, if we want it, then, then we will stick with it. If they turn around and say we have to add it, then we will stick with it. If they turn around and say we don't need it and we're happy not to have it, then we, we have to certainly re-tender. And, yeah, that's pretty much it really, there's nothing to it. Oh yeah, preliminary planning, I have actually asked for preliminary planning, this doesn't cost anything, I can actually submit an email or document through to Rochambeau County, give them the spec, give them what we want to do, do you think we wouldn't have to pay for planning? So the whole thing really, I brought it all back, I was expecting there'd be more people quoting, and I wasn't expecting there'd be as much of what there was, and if there was a typo as well, and I probably have felt that it should be probably deferred until September to give us a chance. But if we do defer it, there'd be two decisions, right, one that we defer it till September, and the second one is that the council do agree that we go out to tender. Not necessarily straight away, but subject to what Rochambeau County Council come back and say to us.
Thank you very much, I was. And could we, with a timber edging for information for us, could we have from somebody indication of how long? What is the life of a channelised timber edging as opposed to?
Yeah, you're looking, well, certainly looking at less than 10 years and you're probably looking at only five because it'd be buried.
Okay. As with concrete, we should expect a last guess, definitely, yeah, I think Peter was next.
Yes, thank you, yes, that was going to be my question. I think preferably if we can have the two options and then maybe wait in a month and just see the difference in costs and work out the, you know, the longevity and the output. I mean, it may be at the end of the day, we have to bite the bullet and pay a big, a big one. Can we also bear in mind the gentleman who spoke to the access group, some good points there, and I think we really need to be up to speed on that. We don't want to build something and then find that it can't be used by some disadvantaged people. And I think the point has been made before, presumably the archaeological reviews, et cetera. These will only be two or three days, we're not talking weeks, are we? Just a few, a few.
So I'll answer these as we go. In answer to the spec, if, I personally would prefer concrete edging, and so actually out to a point with the member of the public board, if we are, we have to pass to the path, we'll be looking at 1.2 metres, so which involves the same as the other ones. What was the second name, was, what's the old archaeological thing? The works, if it was just the lower path, and just for clarity, the picture that was sent to the contractors had got written on it, lower path and upper path, that's not on your documents, but it was on mine. When just for the lower path, it would take 12 days. Now, if archaeological came out every day, that's £300 per day for the property. And that would be on top of whatever was quoted, so, yeah. And if we did have to break, if we had to pay planning, it would be about £450. And if we had to do, and it is a road closure, and that's paper, but it is classed as road closure because it's highways, a road closure could be about £400 as well. But they might waver it, they don't do a road closure, a road closure.
Hello, I'm just going to ask councillor, I think he's got some information. Hello, I'm just going to ask, uh, councillor, I think he's got some information.
Okay, brilliant, yeah.
Then I'll come to you.
Very briefly, it's just, this is a subject close to my heart, because I've spent my life doing this sort of work. Personal advice, based on my own experiences, don't even contemplate wooden edging, especially for the top path, it's not worth it, they're throwing money away. If you are going to do it, second by half the word, and do it properly, because you will later have open for potential claims in the future if the path is changed, which it will.
Thank you, Chair, thank you very much for that advice. Joyce, you're next, or you can sit.
No, I will stand. First of all, uh, can I say a huge thank you to Adam, this has been a tremendous amount of work. The second point is, and he will know I'm going to say it, I would have liked to have seen the coast pass on the top of the ridge, taken up and laid to turf. Nowhere can we put a tarmac footpath between trees, so that would have been a good idea to have included that. And can I just say, had the coun, because there are new councillors here that don't know this bit, I tried to get, um, um, a temporary, come on, temporary lady to take over doing a heritage lottery fund grant. It would have taken her six weeks. She's done the lottery grant upstairs at Victoria Hall, it was refused, we could have done this for parks, for people, together with new fencing all round and sea, I'm sorry, but I think I need to say that to the new members. But once again, thanks to Adam Rell for all the work.
Just Martin.
Yes, I'm not sure that heritage lottery would consider a tarmac path, unfortunately.
Let's, let's, let's.
Anyway, um, going on with subjects, going on the subject of this and the grants and funding of it, we're obviously, even if we end up going with this quote to do the highest spec, we don't have the money, I think we have about forty five thousand pounds, um, left in that, whatever holds me money, um, but we also keep getting told it's only this amount, and the V A T is being ignored. The V A T bumps it up a lot. The V A T bumps it up a lot, and we should be taking into consideration V A Ts, because we keep being told we can claim V A T, but my understanding, and I'm not an expert, none of us are experts here on the table, you can only claim V A T if you're spending, you know, if you've got an income, and we don't have an income to.
I'll answer your question.
No, can I finish, sorry, um, I, I would support that, that councillor Lo, um, defers this, but I'd actually second what Joyce said, or councillor Lucas, that it's a lot of hard work, and perhaps we should set up a working group to help with the next process of this, because we've got to look at funding, and I don't think we should be ignoring the other paths either, because the, some of those are in the poor state.
Keep this agenda, agenda on.
Yeah, it's the paths, in the paths, so.
It's the oneing cuts close.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, you cut close, the whole thing, where the council is just really, it's not out of, it's a historic thing, there's been no maintenance for years, and then while I was supposed to put up on the path that councillor Lucas mentioned, as a temporary measure, probably four to five years ago, so we do need to look at all the paths, and it's, it is embarrassing having the access people here, because there's signs actually for big people in wheelchairs from using it, mobility scooters, and it's supposed to be a path for everybody, so I would like to see that we look at this possibly as a whole project of all the paths in that area, and that may help bring some of the costs down, if it's a, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but it's really, it, it needs looking at properly.
I will, I will just answer two questions. Um, firstly, we had six to a half thousand pounds, which I believe six thousand pounds is wrong, so we're not fifteen thousand now. Secondly, the, we are V A T registered, therefore we claim the evidence back on a corporate basis, that's, so we do not pay the V A T. Okay, and you, you.
I don't know who was next, because I can't see.
Please.
I would like to thank councillor Lo, because it looks, you're in a horrendous job, I wouldn't know where to start, but I do know that you do need the cement or whatever, the engines to a path, otherwise it'd just crumble in no time at all. And I think that if we don't wait another year to have this done, it's going to go even further, and then when that completion of the councils again, aren't they? The initial cost last year, the initial cost this year, because we live in the past quite often on this council, we need to look at the here and now and the future. And I think the sooner we get started on part of it even, the better.
Thank you for that. Okay.
I, 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 there's two proposals, and I'll do them as two, the, the first one is that, yes, it's defer making decisions on what we do. Um, and the second proposal is, let's do the one, yes, first proposal is that we defer the decisions about pointing a contractor, because we haven't, I don't think we've got enough information.
Okay.
That's the first proposal. Second.
Second, all those in favour? The games, substitutions?
We're only up there, we're only there one minute. And then the second proposal is.
You haven't said that.
Yeah, I know, thank you, um, the second proposal is, is that the council authorize expenditure of two hundred and fifty pounds, so that we can tender, we can advertise, to get people to tender.
So two hundred and fifty pounds for the first month.
Two hundred and fifty, I'm reaching the highest.
Yeah, so the proposal is we think we authorize two hundred and fifty pounds for first months for ten, for ten weeks. That's seven, did all those in favour?
Oh, sorry, two, two hundred and eighty six.
Two hundred, so two hundred and eighty six pounds, you seconded it, all those in favour?
Where do we advertise it?
Uh, it would probably be the, we didn't do the records on rock mapping.
Yeah.
Are all those in favour?
Yes, I think so, they did, they did.
We'd go on the website, and it also go, we could go on the L R S.
Those are games? Have you, have you?
I'm a spamer, spamer.
Sorry, you're, you've got an extension.
And please hand out your notes papers as well, so, so, pretty.
My record has said, a lot of work on that, a lot of work. Okay. Agenda items, I understand, it's the trees, uh, moistures, recreation, round Alison.
Originally this came from their councillor Brooks, from residents, um, on Calder, to know that they wanted their tree found. Or the tree behind, on, on a boundary in Castle Close, in Boys' Road, sorry. Um, and I was the tree warden, and she would like to do a report as well, so, um, but the decisions that require any report, I don't know.
Are, are we all quite clear where the tree is starting? You all know where the tree is? You don't give me, my last question, you all, you all know where, you all know where the top end is, yeah? Is that right? Okay. Councillor Brooks.
Yes, very important part, just finally noted, this was my agenda item, and it was refused, um, it then, I was told that it would come to council, and then I was most surprised to find that there was no input from myself, as I was asked by the resident to represent, and as I did in two thousand and fifteen, there's an email that the resident wants councillors to see, I took photographs and wrote a very brief request to council, and I'd like to know the lawful reason why the path decided not to present any of that to council this evening, and that nothing is not helpful, because if it happens to any other councillor, I could think they would stand up and ask why their agenda item isn't being put towards council. Um, also.
Did you, did you?
Also, in two thousand and fifteen, the council voted maintenance.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it's a bit of a time, do I mind?
Yeah, sorry.
Um, I didn't, uh, I've got an email, I think that's what, so I've got copied into an email, and it's just, it's just, it's the residents also. Um, and I've received photographs.
They were attached to an email or a report.
We've heard what the clerk, we've heard responded to that, so we're, let's, let's get back on to the agenda.
Okay, um, I know councillor Lucas's report was tree warden, but I'm disappointed that really the report is recommending that nothing is done, and she's put it in red, or someone has, until two thousand and nineteen, this council agreed to do something every year in two thousand and fifteen, when I brought it to council at the request of of members, so why is it now we're not going to do anything? Um, you know, I, this is, the, the issue to me is not the tree, the issue is the relationship between resident.
We are the B D, I'm, I'm going to stop you, councillor Brooks, just a moment, the agenda item is dealing with the tree, it's not dealing with relationships.
But it would have done, it would have said the relationship between the council if I was permitted my agenda, and it's been fourteen years, a problem to those residents.
But what we are discussing is the agenda item in front of us, which is there with the tree.
Yes, and that's what I was saying, and I'm trying to get some insight to some of the new members.
Can we, please, can you, please don't give us issue that.
So you, this is why you wouldn't allow their email or anything, because you would typically want to sweep everything onto the car and not deal with it. We will approve to do something in two thousand and nineteen, and the problem is not going to go away.
We have got a.
And you keep, keep interrupting me constantly and don't allow me to speak.
I'm trying to get you to get back to the agenda item.
I was talking about the agenda item.
There's nothing on this agenda item that refers to relationships with members of.
Because it was withheld by the office, and it's typical of the office. And the, the residents don't even mind if I give their name, but I won't, because she's not here. But we have a serious problem here that needs to be dealt with, Chairman, and, and the way it's been handled by this council is not acceptable.
I can't stand up to him, he sits down, we go that time.
Yes.
Please, let's just, let me just, let, let me just remind council, our standing orders only allow us to debate agenda items, i.e. what is on the agenda. The agenda item in front of us is to maintain, is to deal with a tree, where there are, the clerk has said there are three decisions to be taken, in support of that, we have a report from the tree warden. We, it is not about relationships with people, if any council wishes to make a complaint about, about, as a councillor, they can do that by the, uh, my C C, or play back to it, it's not a talk.
I know, seriously, I disagree, because we represent those people, and the only way they can get this solved is by bringing it to council, and it has been refused by council.
Down, if you wish.
And I ask you to get the email and distribute the email that Mr. Dorson asked every member of this council to read.
If you wish to make a complaint, then.
I'm not making a complaint, I'm representing a resident of this town, who has an issue with a tree, and you're telling me I can't talk about their issue? Because at the moment, it just looks like somebody just wants it felled, there's a serious issue that you are trying to cover up.
Right, Joyce, you have.
And I've made a request for the email to be distributed to all members, please.
I've got my voice as well.
Just a moment, let me just, can you please hand it out, councillor Brooks, with my, whatever this email is sent to, or.
No, I'd like it distributed at the meeting now, please, because that's what the resident requested.
You have a school, Joyce.
Thank you. Right, for the new members, to put you in the picture, I am tree warden of West Parish, and I'm one of three ward members for North West Ward. Councillor Brooks is nine line. I have never spoken to, uh, the residents, and the residents have never spoken to me in the time that I have been on this council, and that is twenty one and a half years. Now, to get to the tree. Interesting, I, I wasn't there looking at the tree today, I was looking at the hedge. Uh, however, I didn't take a photo break, as both trees. You had the report from, uh, the, um, forestry officer. You have what I, I consider, uh, a report from me about , uh, locking the tree in twenty nineteen. Now cherry trees have to be locked during the growing season, only cherry trees. I've got it all in the report. Now, the trees were planted twenty years ago, or more, by the scouts. When I told the scout, now retired, uh, scout leader, he was horrified to think that one resident wants that tree held, only one, because I've been talking to all the other residents, including the lady that complained about the hedge today. Uh, so my recommendation was that no pruning will be take, will take place if it was severely pruning. And that's why we've got leaf from con infection, it will manage to survive. So not to prune it next growing season, but to prune it so that, if you look at the.
It's not under that.
The photograph, it will eventually all look the same, they are two cherry trees. Now, the other thing is, that I took it from that angle to show you that the tree that is in, uh, dispute is further away from the fence than all the other trees. There is nothing wrong with this tree, it will survive, and it needs to be pruned in, in twenty nineteen to match the other tree. I hope I have made it clear.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, you've got, you've got.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if I should declare an address, my, my dog pees in this tree every day, twice a day. I understand that, that, that it has been said that, that the tree is now an eyesore from the residents, as they look through, unfortunately, as, as Joyce knows, I, I played Mary Hell when it got locked, because that was done before I was on the council, I didn't know.
Yes.
And, yes, we do know it was, it was done too late in the season, that's why it does look a mess. Um, the tree next to it is, is, is gorgeous, and I've had fifteen, twenty people stop me who've used the park, and are appalled that we're even considering telling a healthy tree. Um, so I will not be supporting this. I'm not happy with the pruning, but I have to take what the tree warden says, because it's been the advice we have to take. And I take that one on the chin, but I will not be supporting the type of decision, thank you.
Anne, yes.
Well, first of all, I want to say that, and I've been told many times, that we really have to speak for three minutes on each thing, that that's a sanction. And I'm looking at this tree, and it has been hacked and hacked, anybody that knows anything else, please, that's been hacked. I'm about to know, A, who hacked it, B, who gave permission, and C, anybody that wanted to put down a cherry tree, wants shooting. And it's not over that far in his garden, it's plenty far enough away from the house, not to be a danger to his house, I can't believe it.
Can I ask that?
No, no, Joyce, it's not, not on the agenda. Um, any other?
No, I'll, I'll move, I'd like to move, no, no further action, Chair.
So first of all, then, to take, so the decision's out, is, it's preferred, take no actions, do nothing, second one was to prune during two thousand and nineteen, the third one was to feld the tree, taking no action, please, just do nothing at all.
Okay.
No, 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 it's.
Sorry, I'll, 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 this is not being seconded, I'll, I'll rephrase that, and I would, I'd move, no further action is taken to feld the tree, pruning is currently out in the two thousand and nineteen, it's.
Okay, well, we'll just, let's just then go through these one at a time, first one is to.
Chairman, can I just ask one question about what we proposed in two thousand and fifteen, this way. Well, no, because that is.
I don't know why, I can't. You all said, no, I don't know.
Why can't we ask the clerk?
Have you got what makes you refer to?
When we, it was one of my first council meetings when certain residents wrote and it was brought to council and a programme. You're not having me say, it came to council and it was approved by council at an annual maintenance of this tree. And unfortunately, somebody went away and butchered it using the words of our teacher.
And who can you say? Please, Joyce.
I don't know. I don't know who butchered it, but I'm not happy that we don't do anything that needs to be looked at, the fact that we did a resolution. Well, it may do, but then. How do we resolve?
Right, so take these one at a time, do we have, do we have a proposal and take no action? To take no action.
Yeah, 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 my resolution, I have my resolution.
No further action to be taken until.
To fell the tree.
To fell the tree.
And the pruning which carried out.
And the pruning carried out.
So you all send number, basically number two.
Yeah, where you go along with that. Unless I should say to fell the tree and it's pruning in.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Which overrides all of the resolutions.
I second it.
Okay, and all those in favour? Against? Abstained? Okay. So can you figure something?
So no further action taken to fell the tree and pruning to be carried out in August two thousand and nineteen. Is that wrong action or a prun?
That's basically what I'm saying. Thank you for that.
I'm not agreeing with that.
Councillor Brooks. Agenda items eleven. Agenda items eleven.
Yes.
Also, would you like to move on?
Yeah. Basically, just on my thoughts. We've given permission to, to co-opt new members onto the council. So the council standard those two sets of processes which people could be co-opted upon the council by interview. However, recently, we've suspended that standard order to know what happens to be co-opted with that interview. So basically the decisions, does the council wish to continue to co-opt with that interview or do you wish to interview?
Please, just listen.
Yes, I think we should have some clarity in how we proceed here because I'm uneasy about it. Because it can lead to bias. In other words, we could, if we don't want someone to come on, we could say we'll interview them. On the other hand, you know, someone who comes along, we say, yeah, fine, we'll just have a vote. So for consistency, we need to go one way or the other. We either have interviews or we don't have interviews, it's not an option.
Councillor Brooks?
I just wanted to check something. The notice is outside and that was Andrew Bennett for Open South East Ward. And I don't think we've got the correct wards listed on here. Because I think, I meant to look this evening, but I forgot to look, I don't think the date has actually passed for residents to call the election for Open South East Ward.
I've got it back today, funny enough.
Oh, is it just today?
Yeah, today.
But then there's another ward, it's worked, we've three vacancies.
There's two for South East and one for North East.
It can't be two for South East, there can be two councillors in Open South East. Is it three, sorry, I apologize, I was just speaking.
So the baby's is on two on South East and one on North East.
I'm moving on to this. What?
No, I'm on the grid, two for South East.
Sorry, I.
And I got the email back from my C C today. So we've now got permission to, for October, all three, well, for these.
So it is three, because there's two new members on here.
Yeah, because I wasn't given permission.
Okay, no problem. I would personally like to see a decision made whether we can do it. Whether this standing order is either kept and we stick to it or we scrap it. So that we don't get this business of deciding, because it can be seen that their members haven't had interviews. I don't personally like the interview process and I would like to see that it is scrapped. Because I would like to see more of an open day where people come and get told what it involves in being a parish councillor. And ask questions of the chairman, the clerk or whatever. And then they decide whether they want to put their name forward to option. But ideally, I'd like them to actually go out and not try to be too rude, like one of our councillors used rude language. Get off it, you know, and call an election. Because to me, it doesn't really show much commitment if you, if you, no, because they don't call an election just to be co-opted. And it's the easy way, you know, if you really want to be a councillor, you should go out and call an election. It only requires ten signatures.
Okay, we'll get a gain.
But my thing is that I'd like to come to a thing where we personally would scrap interviews.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I can see that, please just comment on it, we do need to try and get some clarity. Problem I have with it, I mean, to interview would be nice, but you're only going to interview if you've got plethora of candidates. And the reason that people aren't calling an election is because, to be perfectly honest, people don't care. The apathy, I mean, if you call an election, if you get a thirty percent turnout, you've had a good day. So if I thought we had got five or six people knocking on the door saying, we all want to be councillors, then I'd say, let's interview. But we don't, we only, we're lucky if we get the one. And in which point, one volunteer is better than a press man, isn't it? You know, and I think, I just wonder if, if we're going to get a lot, then interview, if we're not going to get a lot, then suspend the standing order.
I don't know how to put this, because I don't know if there's a capacity to do that at all. However, I suggest that maybe it would be a good idea to interview because of what's gone on while I've been on the council. That it might be easier to see what the person's like before they actually come on the council.
Just like I made a comment, if I've just been recently. I was a bit surprised that we just, we sort of co-opted like that without any sort of vetting or submission of any background. Let's say that people could make the decision on this. I'm quite happy to be co-opted, but perhaps in the interest of fairness, other people might like to have been considered also.
Joyce, please.
Thank you. How many times have we had open places and tried to get people onto this council? We have tried and we have tried and we all know why half of them won't. I know eighteen people gave the same reason why they left, but there we are. I agree that it should be by interview for the simple reason, I'm sorry to get at you, Brooks. But how many that we co-opted on have actually sat and listened to what's going on? Nobody, nobody. Ah, moi! But this does also the fact that we need to have people on this council who are willing to stay on the council, come what may. And not be.